Who wants to sign up to speak? Okay. Okay, well, when we get to that part, I'll link it up. Okay, good evening. I want to welcome everyone to the November 3rd meeting of the Common Council of the City of Beaver Dam. It is 7:30. Please do not use the clock in the back. That is inaccurate. The very first item is call to order and our roll call. So Nikki, you want to read the roll? Bonnet?
Hi.
Burnett?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll try harder. Bonnet?
Here.
Burnett?
Here.
Marie?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Larity?
Here.
Ganski?
Here.
Hailey?
Present.
Keel?
Here.
Olson?
Present.
Perkins?
Here.
Wild?
Here.
Yutz?
Here.
Zop?
Here.
Next item is the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silent deliberation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item up is our informal public hearing. First of all, I want to thank all of you for coming. I'll be honest, it's very exciting for the council to have so many citizens who are interested in city government to have them present. This is very unusual for us, so we appreciate the interest. Before we begin, because of the large numbers, we are going to just go through some basic rules that we have for our public hearings. First of all, if you have not signed in, we just want to have an idea of how many people. And is there anyone online who would like to speak? Because I will add their name to the list. Is there anyone online who would like to participate in the public hearing? And by law, I have to ask three times. So one more time, is there anyone online who would like to participate in the public hearing? Okay, seeing no one, then we will begin. We have 15 speakers who have signed up. The procedures are as follows. When it's your turn, come up to the podium. Frank, will you make sure it's turned on and speak into the microphone? It is adjustable. And that's the microphone is mostly for the sake of the people who are online. Please limit your comments to two minutes. When your two minutes are up, the clerk will ring a bell. Please try to avoid repeating the comments that previous speakers have made. And when you come to the podium, we'll simply ask you to give us your name and where you live, whether you are a city resident or you live outside the city. If you're outside the city, where you live. So first person up is Gabriel.
Hello?
Hi.
My name is Gabriel Reyes. I've lived in this town all my life. I've also been following very closely the AI boom that has been happening the last couple of years. It's bullshit, to be blunt. It is not going to last. This bubble is inevitably going to burst. And these chunk tech companies, like whoever is building this, whoever's building this data center right now, do not give a shit about us. They, they're just seek to use our land and pollute our water just to, for people to just make stupid ass images of misrages in the WWE. This cannot stand. These people are morons. And we're, we're being taken for a ride. This data center, in a few years, will more than likely just wind up left abandoned and will be left sour water and ruined dirt. We have no guarantees from them, as we've seen in many other states, cities, towns that have had these same data centers and left their waters and their air and their dirt completely polluted. We, we cannot give them an edge. These people need to be told that they are not fucking welcome. Thank you for your time.
Mayor, could you do something about the language?
Okay, yeah, no, I was going to, to additional things. Number one, normally the protocol in council chambers is please refrain from profanity or from name-calling. That's something just in general in council that is not appropriate. The other thing is I just want to let spectators know that the practice for both our committee and our council meetings is you are free to come and go as you please. So while you are welcome to stay until the very end of the meeting, it is not a requirement for you and you may leave at any point. So don't, don't feel that you have to stay till the end if you don't wish to. Okay, next up is Carol.
Hi, I live in the town of Beaver Dam, actually fairly close to the mess. And as I started complaining on Facebook, and now there's a special group for us, people made comments that, well, you're too late and, you know, they've been into this for five years. The unfortunate thing is, this has all been done behind closed doors. We have been left in the dark and I'm sure anybody here who is for the same reason would agree with this. Even the voting was done, nobody knew about it. We didn't know. I had heard in the beginning that there was going to be a distribution center put there, Amazon. Then somebody else said, no, it's going to be something else. And as I was watching the bird farm demolished, it broke my heart. It literally broke, broke my heart.
Breaks down.
Harm for forever. And I mean, if somebody handed me that kind of money, I guess I'd have gotten out too. But the last point I want to make is the electricity, the, you know, what's going to be happening. It's my understanding that they are supposed to build their own power supply. Most of the places that these places have been built, that's not happening. They're using the local power supply. That's not going to work. If you really look it up, it's not going to work. They are using, will be using what several houses would be using. And I really don't want to deal with blackouts. And I've heard this from other, you know, other sources that that's what they're dealing with, brown water and power outages.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up is Paul Winter.
Okay, I'm here to talk about ordering some 7-2025. I live on Lincoln Street and there's no parking on the east side of the street. Not going to have no parking on the street, period. I think you should, at least a lot of parking on that, on the west side of the street. Because I have family members that come and visit like for holidays, they won't be able to park on there. They had to either park on Cherry Street or park on Prairie Street. And
Sir, we're talking about Lincoln Street later. You'll definitely have a chance to talk about Lincoln Street there.
Okay.
No, no, I just, yeah, please.
He could, well. Oh, that's right. You're right. Yeah, we, I'm sorry, that's a separate public hearing.
Okay, well, then we'll.
Yeah, my mistake too. I should have stopped you. Sorry. I forgot, we have another, another public hearing tonight. Okay. Sorry, Paul. Next up is Diane Holland. And if, again, if there's anyone else here to talk about parking, the hearing comes later, so.
Hello, good evening, and thank you for holding this meeting. As stated, my name's Diane Holland. I live in the town of Trenton, about two miles down Buckhorn Road, right from the data center. Already, we see the effects of that data center just in the aesthetics of our home. The, the bright lights from it shine in our bedroom windows, so we have to make sure our curtains are just right so we don't have it in our eyeballs. But we have lived in our current home for 28 years. It's our first home that we ever bought. And, you know, we would like in that home as long as possible. But in looking at what this data center, center will most likely do to our community, our environment, we're looking to sell and get out as quick as we can because the value of our property is going to decrease because of this data center. And that makes me sad. We've raised four beautiful children there and now our grandchildren come over and it's, it's our home. And I don't think I'm the only one that is going to be affected in that way too, that the, our real estate value is probably going to decrease. We're going to have, we already have the light pollution and then we will have the sound pollution. I'm also very concerned in what this is going to do with our environment as far as, as the animals, the birds, the marsh, you know, we've got that flyway with, with the geese and we've got the gentleman here. Maybe he's going to speak about that as well. I don't know. But what is that noise going to do? I mean, we see what happens with the wind towers and what it does to our nature. Why would we not think that this is going to affect our nature in a very negative ways? The birds, the bees, we already have problems with bees. Listen, if we keep ruining our nature, what are we going to have for food, right? Where are we going to have, we can't have bees to pollinate. If this disrupts the bee cycle more, we're in big trouble. So, and this information has not been studied and given out by these corporations, these companies building these process centers. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next up is Miley Kocinski.
Hi, I'm Miley Kocinski. I live in the Trenton Township, 1.6 miles from the metadata center. I have lived on, on this property for about 19 years. I lived across the street. That's where I grew up. So I've been here for 47 years. I went to Trenton Elementary School, which is on the site where the metadata center is now being built. It is actually four lots together totaling 781.578 acres, owned by a company with a mailing address in Milwaukee, but it's a shell company from Delaware, making it a foreign entity under state statute 183.0212. The Robins Water Fowl Protection Area borders the site and that water falls directly into Beaver Dam Lake through my front yard to get there. My water is already impacted by the construction of this data center. My neighbors sold their land to the project not knowing it was coming. I had attended all Trenton Town Board questions, meetings for two years leading up to the sale and twice the Alliant Energy member had taken the board members out to eat at Buckhorn for a steak before this brokerage went through. I also found out there were two closed-door meetings that were involved in this and they did not cite a state statute for going into a closed-door meeting. Since construction began, my property's water is affected. The creek that runs through my land is 18 to 20 feet wide and several feet deep. We have a bridge to drive our tractor over it. It has flowed for 47 years. It now dries up completely without warning. And then suddenly surges back on like a switch was flipped and it is so violent that it is eroding the creek bed with a loss of 60 inches at the bank of the turn, pulling boulders into our channel and twisting our bridge foundation. I've been reporting these issues to the DNR since May. No water blockage has been found. They've been out several times and the quarry nearby is not at fault for the loss of quantity in water. My prior records seem to vanish every time I get transferred to a new department in the DNR and I have to start over with documenting and reporting. One of my DNR contacts have lost their job during mid-investigation and now my calls are not being returned at all. So I have documentation for all of you with pictures and photos of the details. But I am counting on you. I'm counting on you. This is my city. This is your city. This is my neighborhood. These are my neighbors. These are your neighbors and you're, you're our last hope.
Okay, and those, those will be coming around, those handouts. Next person up is Susan, is it Ken? Kel. Oh, okay. Next up, I believe it's Troy Kellm.
All right, so my name is Troy. I live in the city. And I'm just going to go off of what the first speaker was saying is this deal probably looked good on paper when you first got it, but these big AI models, they do not make money. So what's going to happen in four years when they foreclose on the land? Are they going to replant, are they going to replace the, the beautiful nature? Are they going to replant the fields? No, they're just going to leave it for us. So why are we even doing this? This is just a problem that we're going to have to face four years from now. It's going to be a lot worse then. But that's it.
Thank you. Next up is Wayne Oian. I hope I'm saying that correctly.
Howdy, I'm Wayne Oian. I live just a few blocks away from here in town. I pretty much mind my own business and, you know, I don't get involved in affairs. I certainly haven't liked the way that, well, the politics have been going in our country lately. Especially people hating each other so much. So, you know, I come here a little bit under duress. You know, I don't have, I don't watch the TV, I don't subscribe to the newspaper, so I get my news through the other, you know, internet stuff and subscriptions I have online, email and texts and talking to people and whatnot. So, you know, I remember when the Alliant Energy was talking about doing some project north of town and I didn't think too much of it. And then I thought it was supposed to be some kind of a, I think it was, it was a business park or an industrial park, something like that. So I was a little surprised this year when I heard about the data center. I was like, where'd that come from? No big deal. Didn't think about it till a couple of months, about several weeks ago, I saw someone post something on, it was the Beaver Dam Chatter about some questions about the data center. And I'm like, oh, that's kind of, that's kind of relevant, sure. And so I did a little bit of research and I saw some more questions. I saw the comments on the page from other people in our city and I'm like, well, this is kind of getting definitely both sides of, of the coin here. And someone started up a private page and invited me to it about the data center and I recognized that people are trying to find correct information about what's going on with the data center, not just, you know, rumors and, and half-truths and whatnot. I, I think that people have a lot of very important concerns about the environment and how it's going to impact us, especially when it comes to some other things like with the, the TID and though, how that was done. And I didn't, I hadn't, hadn't heard the term till a couple of weeks ago. So I researched that and I saw, that's two minutes already? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Daniel Radal.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dan W. Radal, city, city resident. I want to tell you right now, the thing about Google, it don't lie. It don't lie about itself. Just Google the impacts of data centers on the environment. There's nothing good out there. Google it. I'm getting 50, 50 computer-generated robot calls a day. FCC, I've been there, but I've been to the Beaver Dam Police Department. And I'm talking with people, you're starting to see more and more and more of it. I'm down to mute in my phone. There's nothing. Now with this data center, are they going to drill down into aquifer that feeds all the surrounding communities? They're going to suck, first thing they'll go is Thoracan Marsh, national thing. Google it. But I want to go a little bit direction with these data centers. What are they all about? They're all about gathering everybody's data. How many are going already? There's about, what, 2,000 of them? Up and running data centers in America right now. They call them data centers. Is that all they're doing? Or are they Bitcoin? Are they mining? Okay. So now we're going to have this so-called data center out there. Are they going to be, are they going to be mining coin on the side? Look at the federal government. See what's happening to the dollar bills. Okay? Look ahead a little bit. And you see what's happening with Bitcoin. Oh, man, Bitcoin's it. So now they're going to take our money, the people's money, it's our old jack here and stuff. Get rid of it and it's going to be replaced with Bitcoin. So now is this data center going to turn into a Bitcoin mining operation on the people's backs? For the environmental costs, the sewage, the water, the electric bills? You know, Google it. Right now, it don't lie to you. So, but I mean, and I'm old now. I grew up on Kuno Trail in the 60s. Wow, things changed. We've, we, we, we've, we've got to look at the future for the kids. A lot of us are on our way out. It ain't about what I'm going to be sitting around.
Thank you, sir. Your, your two minutes are up. Thank you. I should also I should also mention the purpose of the public hearing is to address the council. So if, if you can address your remarks to the council and not the audience, that's, that's the protocol. Next up, I believe it says, is it Rich Sanders? Okay, thank you. Next up, Jerry Creason.
Good evening. It's been a very long time since I've spoken public, especially about something that was this important, but I have several questions for most of you here. Mason County, Kentucky, has a community very much like ours that is fighting a data center. The land owner, land seller, had absolutely no idea who he was selling his land to. The city council members that voted to approve the AI data center were forced to sign non-disclosure agreements. It is a common practice now for these AI centers to say, oh, well, non-disclosure agreements are required so that none of our competitors can find out exactly what's going on. I'd like to know which one of you, how many of you, sold out your constituents, sold out this community, signed a non-disclosure agreement, fully knowing exactly what was going in here? None of you having done any research at all about the environmental impacts, the economic impacts, or the community impacts that these AI data centers have? This was the hot new thing and you guys jumped on it. Show of hands, because you are our civil servants, you were voted into office, you are required to give us full disclosure because you work for us. Which one of you, how many of you, signed non-disclosure agreements? How many of you knew this was coming in and did nothing to inform the people who were going to be most impacted by this AI data center? Specifically, where's Trent Campbell? Who's Trent Campbell and where is he tonight? Show of hands, how many of you knew this was coming? None of you?
Again, for, for clarification. For, for clarification, the informal public hearing that takes place at the beginning of all of our council meetings such as this one are simply for the purpose of citizens stating an opinion to council. The council is not allowed at this point to respond either way. It's simply a hearing for citizens. I would suggest if you have further questions, either contact your representatives directly, contact me directly if they're looking for correct, but, but under the, yeah.
We have contacted and you didn't contact back.
Under legal protocol, this, this governing body is not allowed to discuss an issue that is not on the agenda. That's by law, so that's We can certainly discuss putting it on a future agenda. But, but it can't, by law, we cannot discuss it tonight. It, it has to be published so that citizens have an opportunity to be at this meeting knowing that. But legally, it has to be published 48 hours before the meeting of what is going to be discussed, not by you folks, but by this body. That's what has to be on the agenda, is what this body has the option to act on. So we'll have to look at, I know we have the budget hearing next week, so. Yeah, okay, yeah. Yeah. If you need to speak, you're welcome to sign the list. If you have additional comments, please contact your representatives or myself by email or by voicemail. But for the purposes of tonight's meeting, we need to follow the rules of the informal public hearing. Okay? So next up is Amy Howard, I think.
Hi, I'm Amy Howarda and I'm in the town of Beaver Dam and this affects me in three ways. Number one, I live near the site and I'm deeply concerned about the pollution that it may cause. My understanding is annually it will emit NOX emissions of up to, equal to 10,000 cars. I've also understand that the heat that it will emit will raise the temperature in the area along with obvious concern for water, water pollution. The second way it impacts me is I own multiple commercial properties in the town of Beaver Dam or in the city of Beaver Dam. And the transparency that did not happen makes me hesitant to continue to invest in future properties here. And the third way is I own agricultural land over in Randolph and the transmission lines that are coming for this data center, they are putting directly through the middle of my agricultural field, not on the edge, directly through the middle. And of course, I had to get a lawyer to address this. They will not communicate with me at all. The, or my lawyers. The, or my lawyers, um, and they're just, you know, doing the eminent domain that they will just take the land and use it for this the needs for the data center. So it's just really frustrating that I'm dealing with this and I didn't have any say in it. And continue to not really have a say in it because I'm in the town of Beaver Dam. Thank you.
Next up is Angela Davis. Angela Davis, do you want to come forward?
Hello, my name is Angela Davis and I live on Hemlock Road and we are directly across from all the construction and direct neighbors of the Generac plant. Um, I've just come to talk tonight because, um, I just wanted to share how this has affected my family. Um, myself and my children constantly share around the city. How they, how ATC came and cut down nine of our 50-year-old trees? And just kind of told us that it was gonna happen. Um, then they cut down several on the Snyder's property and two on the property next to us. Um, we were not compensated for these trees, everyone does ask us that. We were given some money to remove the stumps after they were gone. But, um, these trees were planted by the previous owners who are original owners. And, um, now they're gone. Um, I reached out to the city and to ATC and to Trent Campbell to see if we could get anything to replace the windbreak that is now gone on the northwest side of our property. And we've been turned down by everybody. Um, and we've also had to allow people to come into our home to videotape our house because of the blasting that is going on across the street. So that if anything happens to our home, um, you know, we're covered. Um, so we've been putting up with quite a bit going on and, um, not really getting a whole lot of answers from city engineer or Trent Campbell regarding sound barrier, uh, earthen hills that could go up to help with some of the noise pollution and light pollution that we are now facing. Comes directly in our front room window. The refrigeration plant gives this ongoing hum all the time. And now we're going to be putting up with, um, the data center across the street. So, um, you know, I'm very involved in the community and I try to encourage people to reach out and talk when they can. But, um, it does get really, really frustrating when there's not a whole lot of answers. So thank you.
Next up is Emily C.
Hi, my name's Emily and I live less than half a mile away from the data center development. And my family has lived there ever since I was born. And, well, technically I'm in Trenton, so hopefully you still listen, but, um, yeah, so for the last few months, of course, we've been feeling the effects of this development. I see the lights from my bedroom window. We feel the blasts multiple times a day. And my biggest concern beyond everything that everyone has already talked about is the lack of transparency that the city has shown towards its constituents. And this project and all the approvals, the TID, the annexation, the zoning was approved without the community knowing that it was a data center? And without real advertisement of the public hearings. I was at one of the public hearings. And I was the only person there. And this is the biggest development that the city has and probably will ever see. And the fact that I was the only person there should have concerned you if you wanted to hear what your constituents had to say. And this is a mega site. We can all see the city council meetings. Trent Campbell describes it as a mega site. It's 800 acres plus. But the fact that you, it didn't bother you that no, you didn't hear anybody's opinion about it? Anybody who is living near it? That didn't concern you? But I don't think that was an accident because I came and I asked for public records. And I came asking basic questions, trying to figure out what was happening in my backyard. And Nathan Teal literally laughed in my face and asked me why I should care? Which was laughable. He had the gall to ask that. And so I'm here because I understand that there are issues of confidentiality in these types of developments. But he could have said, and you could have said, we can't say all this information, but we do want to hear you. And you should have encouraged public participation. I just want to point out that there was a county in Arizona that made it so that NDAs had to expire 90 days before public hearing, public hearings and votes. And so I think, and this was indirect response to data center developments and this lack of transparency with the community. So, um, it was Pima County, Arizona. If you want to look into it, I think you should follow their lead and be more transparent with your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Ann. Oops, that's the last speaker on the list. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, no, you're right. Oh, that is These are my notes. Oh, okay, sorry. I apologize. Um, we have two additions. Um, first, next up is Shanna Katz. Is that correct?
Rob Kaczynski. Right there. Top right.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't see the second row. So next up is Rob Kaczynski, Kaczynski?
Okay. Um, so I'm gonna, um, share his time. So, um, I wanted to clarify that I was here when the Alliance Energy Representative came into this room and explained what they were going to do and flat out lied to your faces. Um, I know some of you weren't there then, you weren't on, um, serving. But he said that he had come and spoken to all the neighbors, everybody was on board, it was all great stuff. And I shouted out from the back that that was not true. Um, I want to clarify that the water leaving the water protection area goes underneath the metadata center, becomes an underground river of groundwater. It then comes to a head in the rock quarry on my road. Um, it is literally pumped out and over the top of the walls of the rock quarry into a drainage ditch creek that goes through two farms, through my front yard and then through, um, along the rest of Spruce, across a farm and directly into Beaver Dam Lake. And part of the reason I was getting help from the DNR was because of the overwhelming stench when the creek would be dry. There was, it was so powerful, it would make your eyes water. Um, so if anybody else is having this issue, when you call the DNR, there are different departments. One is about permits and whether or not people are violating the permit that they have. Water quality, water quantity, um, zoning, and it takes a while for them to all sort that out. Um, and they were all extremely concerned. I was told it was the number one priority in Dodge County. And as it gets more and more pinpointed toward the metadata center being at fault, everybody's going quiet and now I'm not getting any help. I am a content creator on TikTok and I have been communicating about these. I have over a million views on my videos and tens of thousands of comments from people who live near data centers around the country. They are all reporting the same things, skyrocketing electricity bills, loud noise all the time, low water pressure, poor air, water and food quality, and the loss of value on their homes up to 50%. If you haven't heard about it, TikTok is actively suppressing hashtags involving metadata center communication. So this is spilling over into other social media outlets also. So, um, thank you for your attention tonight. Um, we hope you really take these people seriously because we are all using the same water, whether it's in your front yard or not.
Okay, now up is Shannon, I believe Katz, Katzey?
All right, wasn't initially gonna speak, but, uh, I have a few thoughts because I live on County Road W. And I am a small business owner. I have a salon built off my house on County Road W. And my husband is a business owner for Katz Electric. So he knows a couple of things about electricity. And so, um, we are concerned. My husband has the knowledge on how power works and the reality that our energy bills will be going up after this. And it's not a matter of if, but when. And we didn't have a say in any of that. And so we're wondering if there will be compensation when that happens. Um, as a salon owner doing 40 hours of hair a week out of my salon home, um, I'm planning to need a backup generator because of blackouts that have been predicted when you live this close to a data center. And that will cost between $10,000 to $15,000 for a backup generator. Wondering who will be paying for the costs of those as well. Um, another thing is we've, us and our neighbors have had a lot of huge, beautiful trees cut down to pave ways for this. And once again, no say, um, for ourselves. Um, just someone knocking on the door and saying, we're cutting down your trees and, um, you don't have a say. So in the land of the free, it doesn't feel very free these days. Thank you.
And then finally, our last speaker is Sarah Z.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Sarah Zaring. I actually do live in Watertown. I don't live in Beaver Dam, but I do support your local economy. Um, so I figured I'd come in and show some support. Um, I first learned about the data center last, no, geez, it's November already, in September. Um, and I did, um, a perimeter drive-by and shot a video of the site at the time. And a month later, I came back and it had grown significantly to the point to where it even started to go down W. And a side of the road is closed off, um, because of what I assume is the construction for the high transmission power lines. Um, and so, you know, that video is much longer, a lot of in part because I had to sit at a red light and wait. Um, because since the road is closed down on one side, you know, it's harder to get through. And so I feel, um, like the inconvenience to residents, especially who live near the construction site is just, there's no appropriate adjectives to describe. Uh, I can only imagine what they're going through and we've, I'm happy that we've been able to hear some of their comments. Digging more into it, I found it very curious and interesting how, um, the DNR air permits still are in requested status and an environmental impact statement has not been done despite the fact that construction is so far advanced. Um, and I really feel like too, because this is the first meeting that so many citizens are coming and speaking out against this, that whatever you did do to inform the public prior, you know, to any approvals, um, certainly was obviously not enough. Um, and I feel like, just as an outsider, it seems like you've really let your, your citizens down um, by not giving them an opportunity to weigh on, to weigh in on this sooner, especially the ones who live closest to the construction site and are being impacted because people are already reporting damage to their property and that just doesn't seem right. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sure, two more, two more people. How's that? Um, well, we, unfortunately, we do have, um, a significant amount of other business that we need to conduct this evening. But you are welcome to attend our, uh, November 17th informal public hearing. And there will also be opportunities, um, for public information in the near future. Um, so I would encourage you to attend those. But we do need to address every item that's on the agenda tonight, so.
I appreciate you making time for me. Hi, my name is Madeline Wagner. Um, I moved to Beaver Dam this year. I grew up in Mayville. My boyfriend grew up in Mayville. Most of my community is in Mayville. Um, I'm very passionate not only about Mayville, but Dodge County. I moved to Beaver Dam because I love this county and that was what worked for me. I learned of this before I moved to Beaver Dam. I moved, I learned of the data center from actually community members in Mayville saying that they were concerned not only for Beaver Dam, but for the farmers in the area, whether or not their crops would make it. And this was both red and right, and, and blue voters. Everyone is concerned about this. I feel that I would suggest that you hold a hearing not with anything else on the agenda, but to listen to your constituents. This is a vote for you. If you want to continue to hold these positions, you need to listen to your constituents. This is not just your community, but everyone's community. So please, listen.
And I believe there was one more gentleman who wanted to speak.
Good evening. I'm having a hard time believing that this data center is going to benefit anyone besides a short few. Oh, I'm sorry, Eric Diffr, I live here in town. This is gonna be extracting the resources of this county. And it is going to be shifting the burden of the power, uh, the energy that is going to be required by this facility onto the people that live here. A people, uh, uh, very few people are going to profit from this. And a lot of people are going to suffer because of it. And the long-term effects of this on the groundwater, on the wetlands. We don't know how long it's gonna last. And the optics of this, these large decisions being made behind closed doors really makes the people who have made these decisions kind of untrustworthy. And, um, it's wild that this was done in such secrecy. Um, it's almost like there's not enough oversight. But this center, it's going to stress the environment. It's going to stress the community. And it's only going to benefit a few people. Thank you.
Okay, it's now 8:15 and so we are gonna close the public hearing portion. Again, if you would like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you are welcome to. We will, we will, we don't set the agenda, the official agenda until closer to the date because things pop up and we need to decide how to use the time. Um, but I would suggest that you, um, look at the city website, look at the city Facebook page because we always publish, um, the agenda 48 hours. There, there will be educational meetings as well. We need to have a town hall meeting, have you guys be accountable. Yeah, okay, so, a-again, um, we're not allowed to discuss this at this point, but we've taken your suggestions. We will, um, I'm, I'm sorry, what was the question? No, we have to stick to what is the public, publicly published agenda. That's what we have to do. So. Yeah, so, um, I'm just gonna call the public hearing to an end. We've heard what you had to say. We will take it under advisement. We do not take this lightly. Please monitor, um, you're, that's what you've been doing for the last 40 minutes. Yeah, that's what you've been doing for the last 40 minutes. Again, we don't set the agenda this far out, but yeah, so. We Yeah. Okay, and again, we're not allowed to engage at this, in an informal public hearing. So I apologize, but so I apologize, but those are the rules. Yeah. So we're going to continue with the other items on our legally published agenda. Next item on the agenda. Were announcements? Should we take them?
All your calls. I can go through my agenda.
Okay. Uh, no. Okay. Alders, are there any announcements that you wish to make?
Actually, let me see.
Okay. Okay. I think we will take a brief recess. Let's take five minutes. Let things get a little quieter and we will continue.
I wasn't here, I don't know how it went. But I drove by that a million times on the highway, and it's pretty clear to me that there's a big project going on. Somebody not notices a problem. Yeah, yeah, they'll start coming up. Be nice if they were friendly and not argumentative, because there's so much we could teach them. The people who signed in.
Your mics are still on.
Oh, I took notes on the second thing.
Okay, and we are going to wait just one more minute. We are missing one alder, so we'll wait just one more minute. Okay, we are going to begin. So if I could call everybody to order again. Are we, are we good, Vicki? Okay. First of all, Alders, I want to thank you for your focus and attention during the last public hearing. And obviously, we have lots of food for thought there, and we, this is not a topic that is going to go away. We will be discussing it in the future, so. Next up on the agenda is announcements, the only announcement. Well, I have two announcements. Basically, I just want to thank all those of you who were involved in Fall Downtown Fest, in spite of some, at times, a little iffy weather. It ended up being a great success. A large number of people enjoying an expanded menu of family-friendly activities downtown. And then I just want to remind you that in just a little over a month, we will be having the tree lighting ceremony and the holiday parade downtown. So that's next up in the festivities. So keep that on your calendars, the first Saturday in December. In addition, I believe, is Chief Kreisinger, you want to give us your announcement?
There we go. Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear it now? All right. As I said at the administrative committee meeting, leaders know the importance of good partnerships. And another good partnership that we have is with Dodge County Human Services and Health Director Rebecca Bell and their employees. Over the years, we have worked very hard at addressing the mental health issues here in Beaver Dam, and we've seen a lot of increase in mental health issues. So Dodge County Human Services and the Beaver Dam Police Department are really excited about our new program, which is called the Coal Responder Program. What a coal responder program is, is it actually partners a social worker with a police officer to address some of the crisis situations and those that have mental illness in the community, and they could do a lot of follow-up on a lot of issues that we deal with. I know when I addressed the Police and Fire Commission last year, we did not have an increase in crime, but we had an increase in calls of service. So we're hoping that repeated offender over and over can free up our officers, and we can get people the resources they need. So Dodge County Human Services applied for this grant, and I fully supported it 100% and was on board with some supports of letter, and we did receive that grant. But it took us a while to get it going, and they were accepting applications for a while. And I'm happy to announce that after many meetings with them, and I had meetings with Fall Lake County and many other entities to try and figure out how a model program would work in Beaver Dam. So I am happy to say that after we got through this all in meeting, our first employee was hired today. She worked, she will be a social worker, working out of Dodge County Human Services until on or about December 15th. So she's going to get trained through Dodge County Human Services, and then she will start to transition over to the Beaver Dam Police Department, where she'll start to do ride-alongs and going on calls and helping. And then we'll be actually, that person will actually be embedded into the police department, and will have an office by the police department where she can meet people and go out into the hallway and meet people, or go to homes and meet people. It'll be up to her. But we're excited about this opportunity. It is a Dodge County Human Services employee, but we have a great working relationship and a good partnership. I could see us, how this is really going to work together, because our meeting on Friday went into all of the logistics of how this was going to work. So we're excited about that program, and I just wanted you to know about the program. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I know this has been in the works for a while, so it's exciting to hear that it's beginning. Any, Alders, have any other announcements that they wish to share?
I don't know if you're going to bring it up, but on November 13th is that Economic Development Update at Old Hickory. It's from 11:30 till 1:00. I found the information off of the Beaver Dam Chamber is where I registered.
Yeah, it's always interesting they have, I can't remember the gentleman's name who works with the State Department of Collecting Data, and he always has the most recent information from across the state. So it's always very interesting, so contact the Chamber. It's on Thursday, the 13th, so next week, Thursday. But I do believe if you want to be involved, you have to pre-register with the Chamber of Commerce. Okay, good. Anything else? Okay, next up is the disposition of minutes of the common council meeting of October 20th. They were printed in your packet. Can I get a motion to accept those minutes? Alder Hailey.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from October 20th as presented.
Thank you. And a second, Alda Perkins.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, additions, corrections? Seeing none? All those in favor of approval of the minutes is printed in the packet, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Next up is our city administrator report.
Thank you. I will tell you, October 22nd, the Chamber of Commerce had a ribbon-cutting downtown for the postcard mural, and I attended that, and the mayor attended as well. It went really well. This last week, the police chief gave me a brief tour of the city and showed me around various areas of the community. That was very helpful. I met with a community group that's working on the bike trail plan, and we hope to bring a bike trail plan to the committee, the Ops Committee, and to the council for consideration in the future. Staff and I are working on the wage grid and a corresponding policy to go along with it. We expect that to be before you in December. And I guess that's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is communications.
I don't think so.
Okay.
We have no communications that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Next up, approval of the bills between October 17th and October 30th in the amount of $2,391,132.39. Can I get a motion? Alders Op.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
Thank you, Alders Op, and Alda Furry.
I'll second.
Thank you. Questions? I know Kayla's in the back. Discussion, opinions? Seeing none? All those in favor of approval of the bills, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bills are paid. Next up, ordinance number seven.
Ordinance number 7-2025, an ordinance amending Section 62-50, parking restrictions of the Beaver Dam Municipal Cold, Lincoln Street, east of Prairie Street. This is the second reading.
And because this is the second reading, we are having a public hearing now for this particular issue. So if you are here to speak to council about this, if you want to come up, Paul, why don't we start with you? We already, we already know you. Come on up.
Okay, I just want, you know, finish off the parking restriction. I have family members that might visit for holidays and all that, and don't have to park up on Prairie Street, or in Cherry Street, or even on Spring Street. And if I'm at work and my mother needs to go to a medical appointment, you know, she and I both have trouble walking, and we need to walk to the car on the street, because sometimes my sister won't be able to pull up and drive. Also, the gate at the end of Lincoln Street should be closed. In my opinion, it should not be open, should be closed, because it's actually dead on the street. And then they want to have a warehouse rented out to, for pay for trucks go through. They just refixed the street with blacktop, and if trucks go through there, it's going to get damaged within a year or two. And I don't want to see that road damaged again. It was a mess for the past several years. And it was disappointing enough when you had to make the road narrow when you put that retention pond. So at least allow parking on most of the street. Probably no, no law parking from probably, from, you know, too close to the corner. But at least, you know, allow parking on most of the street. I think that's all I have to say right now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else here who would like to speak during this public hearing, either in person or online? Oh, okay. Do you want to give your name or? Okay.
We have a ringed doorbell camera. People drive through there all day long, and it's the gate, it's supposed to be closed. It's taped at the end of the road, no footstreets. I have kids in college that come visit. Where are they supposed to park? Three blocks away. They're definitely not going to want to come visit me then. That can actually get upset. So I just, please do not pass that, please.
Okay. And I'm assuming you're talking about Lincoln Street?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone else either here, in person or online, who would like to speak to this issue? Yes?
Just wanted to note that there was also a communication in the packet from 1012 Lincoln Street. He was not able to attend.
Oh, that.
Did write his thoughts.
Yeah, you're right.
Email.
And I think, Alders, you had an opportunity to read that letter or that email. Thank you for drawing our attention to that. Okay, one last call. Anyone else who wants to speak to this issue? Okay. Hearing none, I'm going to call the public hearing portion closed, and now we can, Alders, discuss the ordinance. First, Todd, do you have any? Well, not just for information. Okay, I just was checking to see, do you have any additional information that you want to provide before we move forward?
Not necessarily. I mean, we presented it last time with what we're seeing. I guess if there's any questions throughout the discussion, I can certainly chime in.
Okay. So then I would need a motion. Alda Flaherty?
Move to approve for purpose of discussion.
And a second? Alder Bonnet? And discussion? President Yads? Oh, I'm sorry, Alder Fisher.
Who's the alderman for that particular street? She said, is it in the city of Beaver Dam?
I think it's on the edge of, is it? Yes, whoever's beyond university.
Alder Zap has the.
The alderman doesn't even know their alder, their district?
Is it nine?
Who's nine?
District nine?
Who's that?
Okay.
Okay. Then I would, my question to the alderperson is, what do you think?
I agree with the residents. If the residents have their concerns, they're living, they live there and they are experiencing this. So, I mean, I'm happy to go along with what the residents are asking.
Thank you.
That we allow parking on one side.
Thank you.
Alder Bonnet?
I just have a background question and a comment. My question really is, Todd, when this was discussed at operations, I don't remember an issue of a gate being mentioned.
So the gate they're talking about is for the pave building. So when pave moved in there, they removed the gates or they opened it? I'm not sure what they did. All they have there now are cones, maybe? So.
Yeah.
So the dead end turns into private property.
Well, when the Operations Committee discussed this, we had a pretty comprehensive discussion without a clear idea about, and then we came down to safety and the width of the street. We even flirted with options. Could we have parking and go infringe on that grassy area, you know, with the fence or whatever that is there, that barrier? And so, you know, we struggled. It wasn't a slam dunk. And so we voted for the safety issue. Now, you know, you guys could probably attest to safety issues better than us because you live there. The other thing was, you know, the street's poorly designed. You know, it's, you know, there's, there's not enough and there's too much. So, you know, we had ambivalent feelings, so. And we did say if there was comments back that we would reconsider it. I mean, I don't know, I'm looking at some of the operations folks here. So, but is there a, is there a middle ground here, Todd? That's you got to do from a city point of view.
Well, I guess straight from a technical point of view, I guess it's 24 foot wide. We usually like 30 foot, which gives us enough room for two travel lanes in the parking lane. The other point I threw in the latter that we didn't talk about was fire code, which requires a 20-foot clear distance at all times. So if they do have a car parked there, we technically don't meet that fire code.
But it's been this way for 50 years.
It has.
Alder Flaherty?
Follow-up question for Todd. What is the worst-case scenario if we take no action and leave it as is? Could you speculate?
Worst-case scenario? I guess worst-case scenario is if there's a fire out there, we can't get the big fire truck in there. We can't get to them.
That, that's concerning enough, but I guess I still would have to turn that over. But it seems to me banning parking inconveniences a greater number of people. That's just my own opinion right now and how I'm thinking of it. But I thought I'd have you speculate. What's the worst that could happen? Thanks, Todd.
Alder Zap?
Mayor, or Todd, we kind of had a similar situation with Ford Street a while back and we ended up leaving the dead end block of Ford Street with single-sided parking. Actually, it was double-sided parking. This reminds me of that, with the exception of people using it as a through-street. Can the city take any action to, on its side of the right-of-way, stop through traffic?
Yeah, I'd have to go in our right-of-way and I guess there's a driveway right at the end of that. So we'd have to see how much actual room we have to work with.
It's not much.
Right.
Yeah.
Because if we wanted to do something extreme, if we couldn't get pave to respond, we could do what we need to do.
I would, I would prefer that, because I don't think we've contacted pave and discussed this with them. I, you know, perhaps they would be willing to put in some kind of locked gate that would only be accessible to staff before we would resort to the city taking unilateral action. But I don't think that, I think that might be a worthy discussion is to talk to the folks at pave and explain the situation.
Because from my standpoint, I'm, I'd be comfortable leaving parking there if this was not a through-street. I mean, we had a similar situation with Ford Street.
It's safe at the end of the block.
Right, but it's, but it's being used and that's my, my issue is if people are in effect using this as a through-street, then it becomes more of a safety travel issue. But if this can, if we turn this into a dead-end street and it functions like a dead-end street, I personally don't see anything wrong with leaving parking there. But we have to control the flow of traffic if it's indeed being used as a travel-through-street. So if there's a way to, I mean, my two cents is I'd look to Todd or the city to communicate with pave. If pave's not willing to control the through-traffic, let them know that we're considering, or if Alders are considering or the city engineers considering controlling this as a matter of safety. So maybe we come back or we, we, I guess I'd post, I would, I would put a motion. Oh, we can have a discussion too if we'd be willing to postpone this until we get more information about whether pave's willing to control access on this street. So I'll make that motion if anybody wants to second it. It's out there.
I'll second.
Okay, so we are voting on the motion to, and what was your motion, Zach? To amend?
I would like to postpone a decision on this. My request is to get more information from pave if they're willing to control traffic to make this function like a dead-end street. That's, that's the information I'm looking for. Other Alders might just want to vote no on this right now and be done with it. But I'm looking to see if this can actually function like a dead-end street.
And I would just like to point out that one other item that was discussed, I believe at Ops and was in the packet, I can't find it, but I know it's somewhere, is one, it's not a worst-case scenario, but it's an ongoing scenario that city staff every single year have to expend time and money and energy to fix the tree border because of, the street is not wide enough for parking and so people who do park there end up parking on the grass. And so it's always rutted and it's muddy. And so that's, it's not a worst-case scenario, but it's sort of an everyday mundane concern.
Can I still make a comment about this yet?
Well, actually, we probably should, yeah, we should address the motion of tabling or postponing first. It's been, the motion has been made, the motion has been seconded. So we should vote on that first. So all those in favor of postponing the vote on this resolution or, excuse me, ordinance, and, yeah, until we receive answers to the questions that have been raised, that's what we're voting on. So Vicki, you want to?
Can you, who seconded that?
Alder Bonnet.
Bonnet. All right, so this is a motion to postpone the vote till more answers are given from pave. All right. Bonnet?
Aye.
Burnett?
Aye.
Furry?
Aye.
Fisher?
No.
Flaherty?
Aye.
Ganski?
Aye.
Hailey?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Perkins?
Aye.
Wild?
Aye.
Yads?
Aye.
Zap?
Aye.
So this ordinance will be postponed until we receive answers for some of the questions that have been raised this evening. So then we have another, do we need to do anything with the motion on the floor that the original motion?
Discuss, I guess we would just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Got it, thank you.
So, well, we don't normally notify you directly, but it should, we put out the agenda 48 hours before the meeting. It's public record, it's in the paper, it's on the website.
I'll, I'll send it again if it comes back.
Okay. Thank you, Todd. To the residents, very good, very good. Thank you. Okay, next item up, Resolution 91.
Resolution Number 91-2025, a resolution approving land division parcel number 206-1214-3443-097.
And let's see, Todd, do you want to address this one?
Sure. So this came through Plan Commission on October 22nd. The owner is petitioning the city to do a zero lot line on an existing duplex at 300 and 300, 300A Farwell Road. Both staff and Plan Commission recommend approval of the land division as requested. There was a contingency built into it for the ability inspector to verify the firewall between the two units. That's since been done and verified, so we are recommending approval as presented.
Very good. Can I get a motion? President Yads?
I will make that motion for zero outline, I believe it is.
And a second, Alder Fisher. Thank you. Discussion, questions? I guess we're ready to call the roll, Vicki.
Burnett?
Aye.
Furry?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Aye.
Ganski?
Aye.
Hailey?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Perkins?
Aye.
Wild?
Aye.
Yads?
Aye.
Zap?
Aye.
Bonnet?
And the resolution passes. Next up, Resolution 92.
Resolution Number 92-2025, a resolution directing the closure of the American Rescue Plan Act Fund and the investment of remaining funds.
Okay, I think I'm going to ask our city administrator to just introduce this first and then maybe Zach, if you want to comment on what happened at administration.
Okay, definitely. Before you today is the resolution. For those of you, just, I'll give a brief recap. American Rescue Plan Act was adopted several years ago as part of the federal government's response to COVID. We ended up getting quite a nice grant or receivable from the federal government. Throughout the last couple of years, the city council has adopted resolutions appropriating funds or directing that future money be set aside for projects. Today, we're looking at a couple of projects that were ordered and budgeted for, it was budgeted for 2025 and ordered in 2024. So part of the federal obligation is that we're supposed to obligate it, obligate the last of our money. And so we've done that in 2024 when we moved to purchase two squad cars and a flatbed truck in 2025. So in 2024, staff got that under contract so that we could purchase it in 2025 using ARPA dollars. In the resolution before you today, what we're proposing is that we use the money for those projects as well as a funding of Swan, of Swan Park. And then we close out the fund. There's a little over $300,000 in that fund right now. And what this does is it gives us a way to close out the fund, meeting the federal requirements and then shifting money around internally so that if you decide to do additional projects, you can always take that out of your capital budget. But this is a clean ending to a long fund, a long grant program. And by doing this now, we can keep it in the 2025 audit and not have to have it go into 2026. So that's the proposal.
And then Zach, do you just want to comment quick on what happened in admin?
Sure. We did have two members of the Hometown Planning Committee attend. They were looking to make sure the city kept its commitment to the bike paths and on the resolution that the city is committing to using other, other funds to move those projects forward still. So there, again, there's still interest in that Hometown Planning Group moving those projects forward. There was also a discussion that, an agreement that we were, the body wasn't, the committee was in favor of kind of reducing any, minimizing liability by taking this off the 2026 audit and it's reducing our potential liability, right? We're done in 2025, we don't have to worry about whatever happens in 2026 because we are done now with this $300,000 of remaining funds. So at the end of the discussion, we did approve it unanimously, so.
Okay, so now I would, after that information, I'd like to get a motions in a second so we can discuss. Alder Fisher?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 92-2025.
Thank you, Alder Fisher. Alder Bonnet? Thank you. Okay, now Alders, questions, comments, discussion? President Yads?
Is any of this $300,000 being set aside specifically for the bike paths or that, I want to call it a shelter down there off of the park, the parking lot on Soul Center?
I believe the council's intention, the last time we voted on the use of ARPA funds, you'll recall, we've had several rounds of voting about the use of ARPA funds. I believe, I, don't quote me on the exact amount, I believe it was somewhere maybe between 30,000 and 50,000 that were set aside for hometown projects. And these would be two of them. But then that's, the rest was not. The rest was earmarked for other things. Hang on. I got a list here, let me see, but hometown plan projects up to 50,000. And at, well, but then we've, they've spent some money, so right now there's 30,000 left in the, in the hometown plan project portion of the funds that we.
What are we calling the hometown project? Things downtown or?
Well, you'll recall that the hometown plan projects that we approved previously were ideas that this group, that they were involved in the writing of our comprehensive plan and our community action plan. I don't know if you recall that.
Oh, I remember that.
A year ago last spring. And these are citizens who they met and became interested through that process and so they've continued to meet as a group and they chose a couple of the things in our comprehensive plan that they felt strongly about. And so they wanted to help push those items forward. So that's, that's where this all started was. They're trying to bring to life some of the ideas in our comprehensive plan.
We have so many projects half-done and now we're going to build a $1.2 million project? We got to tear buildings down or create bicycle paths around town? Maybe we should concentrate our money on our parks. We got Swan City Park half-finished and now we're going to start up another project?
Um.
But, I mean, maybe I'm getting off the rails here, but this is just.
Yeah, and, and again, not that I want to close down this discussion, but this resolution simply says that that discussion, what specifically we will, because by, by passing this resolution, what we'll do is we'll close out ARPA funds and any of these projects that we had intended to pay with using ARPA funds will now be paid with capital improvement funds. So when we, when we talk about capital improvement funds, that's when we can discuss, is this, do we still want to do?
I, I agree. I mean, we got to close this thing out, but I guess I'm looking a little bit farther down the road where the money's going to end up at, but I agree closing this out. We got to wrap this up and let's move on. Let's get the federal government out of our hair.
I just want to comment that as we do wrap this up, I think it's really unfortunate that the Beaver Dam Ride Group didn't really benefit from this. They've been working really hard on trying to improve the the skate area down there, and they've done a lot of fundraising, and they don't need a lot of funds to get there. And some of the projects we we approved in the line to to spend these ARPA funds would have covered all that they need and more. And we would have seen so much more growth with the ability for our Beaver Dam youth to have a great place to go to be able to skate. And it would have brought people into Beaver Dam, because people travel to go to good skate parks. And I guess I just want to put out there that I think it's really unfortunate that we missed the boat there.
Well, and again, I I don't know if we've necessarily missed the boat. The idea is that by spending what we have currently labeled as ARPA funds on, what is it, two squad cars and a flatbed, flatbed truck that we've already ordered and purchased, where basically, those were already paid for out of the capital improvement fund, by paying for them with ARPA funds, now that frees up three hundred thousand dollars, and correct me if I'm wrong, Larry, but that frees up three hundred thousand dollars in the capital fund that we can use, we can have this discussion of where we want that money to go. So we haven't missed the boat. What we're doing is we're using ARPA funds to pay for things we've already purchased, and that frees up money in our capital fund to use in the future. So, yeah, Alder Fisher?
This entire thing with ARPA, I've watched with interest, and I made comments in the past, that as much of the ARPA funds that could be used for capital improvement plans should be used, so we don't have to borrow the money. But yet they come up with all these groups, it come boils down to wants and needs. This should have been used from the beginning on what the city needs, that we wouldn't have to borrow money for. But yet it gets off of the rails, and we get all of these outside people, not elected, just appointed groups, that think that they know what we want, and that's where the money went. Let's close this out and move on.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, Vicki, I think we're ready to call the roll.
Puri?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Flaherty?
Aye.
Ganski?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Perkins?
Aye.
Wild?
Aye.
Yads?
Aye.
Zap?
Aye.
Bonnet?
Aye.
Burnett?
Aye.
So the resolution passes. Finally, last up item on the agenda is the District Six vacancy. And I was hoping Tracy would be here, Vicki, I don't know, I'm, because wasn't Tracy responsible for the advertisement and the posting, or are you familiar with? Okay, yeah. Here's, here's the current situation, that the District Six vacancy was advertised more than previous vacancies. I was hoping Tracy could give me exact, but I know it appeared in the paper. I know that it was on Daily Dodge several times. I know that it was posted on Facebook two or three times. So we've had as much or more advertising for the vacancy than we have had in the past. I have approached at least three people directly, and at least another three people indirectly through people that I know about filling the vacancy. And so far, there has been no one who has stepped forward to fill the vacancy. Alder Fisher?
Let's just leave this open. The April election is coming up. If we appoint, or you appoint, somebody in there, they're going to have a heads up. This has come up time after time. It would be stupid, this close to the election, for somebody, let's let the residents of that ward make the decision on who their next alderperson is, rather than we, the elected officials, appointing another elected official.
Okay, and and I understand what you're saying. My concern is if, that it's easier for a citizen to be appointed, and then and then run for election, because they've already had a little experience, they dipped their toe in the water, they have an idea of what the job entails. I think you're more likely to have at least one candidate in the April election, if we can appoint someone now, versus just hope, because if if no one comes forward for a position where you don't have to run, I I'm very afraid that there will not be anybody when they do have to run.
Fine, then you can appoint somebody if that happens.
But but the point of the discussion is, as a body, we need to decide what you want to do. We could continue to advertise. There would be a slight cost for if we would run it again in the paper. But we can instruct Tracy to do another round of advertising. We could not advertise it and just rely on word of mouth and hope someone comes forward. Or, as Mick suggested, we could just intentionally leave it vacant, with the hopes that someone will take papers out in December to run in the April election. So I just would like to, as a body, have you express what you think is the best for?
I'd like to make a motion that we leave this open until April. I'm looking for a second, then we can make a decision.
Okay, but if 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 we have a motion to leave it open, then that precludes any future appointment by me?
That's kind of why I'm making the motion.
Okay, just so everybody's clear.
Yeah.
So then even if someone does step forward between now and January, December thirty first, I believe, is when papers have to be in.
You have a motion on the floor?
They would. Yeah, just, I'm just clarifying, Mick, so everybody understands what the motion is. So first, we need a second.
I'll make that second.
Okay, discussion. Alder Zap?
Would would the city still be interested in advertising? So while we would not be advertising to appoint a vacancy, this district might need help getting somebody to run. So if we post, if we don't fill this, is the city going to commit to maybe still, or would the city commit advertising to this district, or just in general, hey, the election's coming up, consider running, consider running for any seat, just trying to get more attention? So.
If if that's the will of the council, in the past, there has not, I mean, there's been the normal postings announcing which districts are, you know, there's sort of the standard notice that the following districts are up for reelection this year, you know, you can pick up papers, you know, but I mean, it's the same, it's the same notice we do every year. So I don't know if you're talking about something special.
I just, I wanted to make sure there was, there was something, and it sounds like there is. I was unaware, I think. Even, even, yeah. But they'll, so the city will advertise that this is coming before December first? Because that's when we can start, right? So December? Okay. Okay, and that's, that's, that's what I'm looking for, is there, okay? Okay. Okay, thank you.
So Alders and even districts, did you jot that date down? Because that's you two. Long as you're talking about it. I believe it's the end of December, if I remember correctly, but I'm not positive. I think the thirty first. Yeah. So Alder Bonnet?
So to clarify, I was going to say something different until Vicki talked. But if, if we appointed somebody now, or somebody said, I want to be the alder, would they would have to decide in the month of December whether they wanted to take out nomination papers? Okay, because what I was going to say before that, I was going to say, I don't support the motion the way it is today, but I would support it a month from now, to give us another month to try to recruit. But I don't know if we're going to gain anything. So anyway, thanks for clarifying.
Alder Burnett?
We gave it a shot. You know, I advocated of trying to fill a position, so it wouldn't remain open for six months at the last meeting, when we talked about this last time. But we gave it a shot. We gave it a good, a good shot. And if nobody comes forward, let's leave it go. Leave it go empty until there's nobody who wants to do it.
Good. Alder Olson?
What's the harm of us, I mean, it's it's empty, we're not advertising, but if someone shows up and says, hey, I'm from Ward Six, I would like to fill that spot, let them. I guess that's my problem here, is that why are we shutting that down? Like, I understand, maybe we don't want to keep advertising. And what's the difference of us not advertising and allowing someone to show up and say, hey, I would like to step in, knowing that it's only going to go till April, until unless they fill out papers, and they do all the steps it's going to take them to go further than April. But if they show up in two weeks and say, hey, you know what, I've seen what's going on, I would like to to put my my body into that seat, is that possible? I don't see the problem. And then sitting there until April, and and making decisions and trying to help us out. We just had a large group of people here feeling like they weren't represented. If there was someone from Ward Six in there, and they wanted to be the one sitting in that seat, I'm sorry, but that's their prerogative, that's their right, and I don't like taking that away personally.
Alder Ganski?
My thought was the same on it. I was going to say the same thing, but I did have another question, which was, say somebody does show up after December first, they they are seated, they can then run as a write-in candidate, right?
Well, they could still do nomination papers in December.
No, I mean, I guess I'm saying after that process is closed, right? There's a process for them to run as a write-in, so.
And?
Right.
Well, and I I believe they can be a writing candidate, but there is a deadline. You do have to make, put in notice that you are a writing candidate, but it's later in the process. So if someone, yeah, they they do have to register as a writing candidate, but it's, it's, yeah, it's, I mean, they have more time. So, yeah. Good. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so the motion on the floor is to leave the seat vacant until April. And that means that regardless of whether someone comes forward or not, the seat will remain vacant. So if you vote, so that's, that's the motion on the floor. So we're ready to call the roll.
Fisher?
Aye.
Flaherty?
No.
Ganski?
No.
Haley?
No.
Keel?
No.
Olson?
No.
Perkins?
No.
Wild?
No.
Yads?
Aye.
Zap?
No.
Bonnet?
No.
Burnett?
Aye.
Puri?
No.
So the motion is defeated. Do we need to pass a motion, or can we just, Larry, can we just leave it open the way it is, without a motion? So if if we take no action, that means we're we're open to hearing a nomination if someone comes forward. So and again, I would appreciate it. I know I've spoken to lots of people. But if you have an opportunity to talk to people, and Zach, if you want to pull out your Aldermanic map, I should have, but I do know it it covers the district, it starts behind the hospital, and then it's it's kind of a long, skinny district, so it goes up north, and it crosses Park Avenue. So. It goes, yeah, no, it goes all the way to Prospect. So it includes like Lois Lane and Codran Lane, that little horseshoe. And then it includes like Hillcrest Court, it includes everything around the hospital, and then up Roosevelt, on the east side of Roosevelt, and it includes Warren's, most of Warren Street, and all of Webster, or all of Web, all of Webster, all of Warren, and the south side of South Street. So I don't know if that's helpful for those of you who don't live in that neighborhood. I I've used to live there, so I know where those places are. But anyway, the point is, if you know of anyone, please send them my way. I'd be happy to just have a chat with them. So I am looking for a motion to adjourn. Alder Burnett?
Motion to adjourn.
Anybody want to second that? Alder Wild?
Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?